Take that as a yes. I have a microphone right here, yes, and...
It's... The microphones are for the recording. They're not a public address system, so we'll all have to speak up nice and loudly and clearly.
When I call on people, I'll have you raise your hand. And TV 10, 13?
Sycamore TV.
13:01.
13:01 has a runner that will bring a microphone around. Now, you can start talking, but they'll try to get there quickly with the microphone. So, welcome to the annual town meeting. My name's Ken Wilson. For those of you who don't know me, and for those of you that do, it's still Ken Wilson. A few housekeeping things to start with. I'll be using the main moderator's manual, 2005 edition. If there's no objection to that, I'll use that as a guide. I've used it for years here. Secondly, only registered Porter voters may vote. And in fact, they're the only ones that may speak at the town meeting without the approval of the general assembly here. How many people are here who are not Porter registered voters? Okay, one, two, alright. What I would like to do is just have a... If there's no objection, when it's time for them to speak, we'll allow them to speak on the subject that they've come here for. If there's no objection, I'll consider that consent. Please wait until I recognize you before addressing the assembly, and it's best if you address the moderator rather than turning to make a comment to a person that previously said something, so... And do we have any representatives here that are here to answer questions for the groups? There's one for the social service groups. Two, alright, when the time comes, we'll call on you if you're still here. And all persons elected to town positions should see Janice to be sworn in before leaving. The term of your office starts when you're sworn in. It's not when you're elected, so make sure you see her. And Janice, you asked me to make another announcement too, and I forget what it was.
You already did it. That was the one to check in with Hannah.
Alright. I believe I start with the reading of the results of the election from yesterday. And the first one is selectmen, assessor, and overseer of the port, one position. Brent Day was running. He received 73 votes. Bruce Wilson received one, and Walter Toll received one. Road commissioner, three-year term, one position. William A. Day Jr. received 72. Steve Sawyer, four. Rudy Whistley, one. Scott Chapman, one. Director of SAD 55, three-year term, one position. Carol Levitt received 81 votes. There were no write-ins. Planning board member, three-year term, two positions. Anthony Morelli received 68 votes. Alan Walsh received 65. Greg Everle received one. Christina Forsyth received one, and Dale Metcalf received one. And as to the referendum question. Question one, shall this municipality authorize the state to permit the operation of agency liquor stores on Sunday? 57 yes, 25 no. Question two, shall this municipality authorize the state to issue licenses for the sale of malt liquor and wine to be consumed off premises of an established... of listed licensed establishments on Sundays? 58 yes, 24 no. Question three, shall this municipality authorize the state to issue licenses for the sale of malt liquor and wine to be consumed off the premises of licensed establishments on days other than Sunday? Yes, 63 votes. No, 17 votes. Question four, sale of malt liquor and wine to be consumed on the premises on Sunday? 56 yes, 23 no. I gotta get to my thing here. Article one, I'm the moderator. Article two, the ballot we had. Article three. I know, Article two, to elect by secret ballot the following town officers, we've done that. Now, we have other necessary officers. That's Article four, so I'll go to Article three. To vote on the following local option questions, and I just read that. I gotta get on track here. Article four, to choose all necessary, all other necessary town officers for the ensuing year. Budget committee for a five-year term, there are two positions. I'm the outgoing person. Roger Barabee's outgoing. Are there any nominations for budget committee? Kathy?
I nominate Jim Stanley.
Jim Stanley, is there a second?
I'm second.
Are there any other nominations? Yes.
I nominate Roger Barabee.
Roger Barabee's been nominated in second. Are there any other nominations? I think we can take these as a vote together, as a slate. All those in favor of the two nominees, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it's unanimous consent. For the George W. Toll trustee, three-year position, one position outgoing, Cindy Barabee. Is there a nomination for the position of trustee?
Nominate Cindy Barabee.
Seconded.
Are there other nominations for that position? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Cindy Barabee as trustee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous consent. The Elijah Fox Trust Fund, three-year term, one position outgoing, is Karen Sawyer. Is there a nomination?
Nominate Karen Sawyer.
Seconded.
Are there other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Karen Sawyer for trustee position signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous consent. Any newly elected officials, please see Janice, as I said, to be sworn in at the end of the meeting. Article five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to spend an amount not to exceed three-twelfths of the budgeted amount in each budget category of the 2019 annual budget during the period from February 1st, 2020, to the next annual town meeting. Is there a motion? It's been moved in second. Is there discussion of Article five? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article is approved. Article six, to see if the town will accept the donation of the Porter Union Church and the funds held in the name of the Porter Union Church for its repair and maintenance. Is there a motion concerning Article six?
Move the article as read.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? Yes.
What is the long-term game plan... Sorry. What is the long-term game plan for if the town accepts it? What are we gonna do with that building?
Would the selectman like to answer the question?
There are several options. One is the town accepts it, maintains it. The only thing that we've been able to find out that has been used for in the past few years is they've had a couple of weddings there. If we take it, we have to maintain it, like we do the meeting house. For what purpose? As it stands now, it's a church. The building is sound. I was surprised. We went through it. For the age, it was moved... For people who don't know, it's from Freedom. It was donated to the... Porter Union Society. They're the ones that own it. There is a deed for it. It was taken down in Freedom, moved to Porter, and the society purchased that lot for $25 from Matilda Bowden, I think it was. And they rebuilt it there. And it's been there since 1909. So, it's been there a long time. There are a lot of people in town that don't know it's there. They drive by it, but it just hasn't been used. There's no... The lot is 65 by 85. So, you really can't do much with the lot itself. One option is to take it, maintain it. Another option is to try to help the people that are left in the society to do something with it. If it's sold, my feeling is whoever buys it is gonna strip it, sell the pews. The pews are in excellent condition. They're gonna sell everything else and make a bundle, and then probably tear the building down. The other option is for the town to take it and do that with it. That way, the town gets the money, and we can sell inexpensively the land to Winnebago, and then at least we get the tax money off that land.
Is there any... My understanding, there's no sewage or water to the building?
There's no water, no septic. There is electricity, but that's it. And like I said, there is a furnace for heat. The furnace is in good condition. It appears to be, anyway. We don't know when the last time fuel was put in the tank. There is some there, but it's been there for quite a while, is my understanding. So, I don't know how good that would be, or... But the furnace did run before, because they have used it. Yes?
Yes.
Can you tell if it would be possible to put in septic?
I don't think there's enough room to do it on that lot.
So, you could sell it for your house or something?
Well, the lot isn't conforming. I don't think you could do much with that lot, so...
Yes. Senator?
It mentions funds. Is there money that comes with the church?
There is some, yes. I forget the total. You remember the total?
About 1,400, 1,500?
Yeah, it wasn't a whole lot.
I think it was like $1,400, I think is what she said. They're currently... The only expense they'd have right now is they're currently is insurance. And she says that runs 600 bucks a year.
And the insurance covers just if it would happen to burn down, to clean up the place. That's basically what the insurance covers. It's not for rebuilding.
Yes.
Is it known what the original vintage is? How old it?
1909 is the first date that we have.
Okay. So, we don't know how long it was in Freedom?
No.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Yes.
What is the board's recommendation? Do you want honest opinion? I'll give you mine.
I mean, my... I guess my right... I would say, I mean, if we do take it, I would say we take it and we do just that. We part it out, get the revenue off it, and put the lot back to Winnebago. It is... It does need a little love right now. I mean, it's just been closed up for so long. I mean, I'm sure the paint's lead, so it's gonna cost a fortune to paint it and scrape it. You know, the window, all the caulking around the glass, the caulking falling out of the windows. That would be my take on it. I mean, I would take it and part it and give the lot to Winnebago.
Same here. There are pictures of the church and the inside over there on the board.
But the foundation, I mean, the rocks, I mean, they've chinked them all with some... It's in very, very good shape for the age of it, surprisingly.
It was very well cared for while it was being used.
Do you have an opinion, Rob?
I do. I tend to agree with the rest of the board. I think there's two values in it. One is economic, and the other is historic. The economic value is clearly not very high, and the historic value is really sort of a personal choice for the citizens of the town to make. I think if the town were to hold it and try and restore it and make some use of it, it would be... That would cost... That would... The economic value would be affected by the cost of doing that. I originally thought it might be nice to have it for a meeting space, but with the pews in it, there really isn't a place to have a meeting space. It's also not close to this part of the village where typically most of the activity in town has happened. I reluctantly think that my suggestion, reluctant suggestion, is that if the town accepted, it'd be prepared to dispose of the property in the most economical way, and whatever funds come from that would be returned to the general fund.
Ken, can I say one more thing?
Yes, and then I'm gonna call on Gene.
And as far as dollars and cents, I think that's kind of a crapshoot, so to say, because we don't know what we would get for it, what we would be left with. I don't... I mean, we haven't dug that deep into it at this time yet. So, we take it, we make a few bucks on it. What are we left with? What are we left to clean up? What are we left... You know, what's left? So, as far as any really information on what it's gonna cost us, what we're gonna make, we have not got that in depth yet.
Gene?
As you know, this would be a tough one for me to see the building torn down, because I think that it's our history, and once it's gone, it's gone. And you know, I've been pretty passionate about that. My reaction, however, is the town is not in the business of accepting property that people can't keep up. You know, it could be that building, the next time it could be another building and another building, and that's not what we're in the business for. But on the other hand, we're not in the business to make money. If we accept that building, I don't think it should be as a financial gain to us that we tear the building down, which is... I'm sure it sounds like you're advocating. Sell a pews, tear the building down. As, you know, someone will salvage it, I'm hoping, but I would not hate to see us accept it with that intent. I would rather see us refuse it and let the Union Church sell it, with the hope that someone's going to buy the building and love the building. If we're not gonna buy it and love it, we shouldn't accept it.
Is there further discussion here in the back there?
I agree with her. I live in Porter Village, and the village is an eyesore, and the church is a nice... You know, it's really the only building there that has a lot of history that's still in decent shape. It would be nice to maybe if the town wanted to take it, that the building got moved. You know, I personally own four lots and... Five lots in Porter Village. If it's... The town wants to tear it down, I say at least to give somebody the opportunity to try to move it, so it can be preserved in the village, and that the town could still use it as something if they wanted to, or that it could be a historical landmark, we could try to put on the registry, and it could be preserved for the town.
Is there further discussion? Yes.
My question kind of goes along with that, gentlemen. Do you know if it's... If we could sell the building, it would be salvageable to move?
Yes.
My opinion is it would be very costly, because even if you took the bell tower off, the roof line is so high that you'd have to take every power line that crosses the road down, no matter where you moved it, which would boost the cost up quite a bit.
Well, I was wondering if you could just sell the building, and somebody might move it to someplace else.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I don't know if anybody would wanna put that money into it, you know? There's one other thing that Patty Parker's the one that we spoke with, and she had a bag of books, and that contained bank ledgers and stuff, but it also had small booklets of minutes of meetings that were held in the '30s and '20s, some of them. So, there were quite a few of those that I don't know if the historical society would want to keep. I think somebody should keep that, because it is, you know, it's pretty comprehensive, goes backward a way. And there is a history of the building that I think Dottie Locke wrote up, that went right through to, I believe, the '80s. And what was done with the building and who used it and that type of thing. It's kinda neat.
Is there further discussion? Yes.
I was thinking what the difference is in the size of the lot there for the old Calvary Bible Church that they ended... That somebody ended up making into a house. I know that you're saying it's not really big enough for a septic system, but sometimes now there are alternatives to that, right? I mean, so I wonder if anybody's looked into that possibility? Because that... The Calvary Bible Church that someone turned into a house is lovely.
I think there's an issue with the size of the lot. In the case of the Cavalry Baptist...
For me, I can't tell the difference, you know?
Yeah. The church, the Cavalry Baptist Church already had a septic system on it. So, it was then had vested rights, grandfathered it could continue. This lot's 65 by 85. It's a very small lot. I think the minimum lot size you can put a septic system on according to state regulations is 20,000 square feet. I don't think it meets that. So, I think it's... There's... It's not a viable lot, a standalone viable lot for anything other than parking, maybe.
I would like to make a comment, and yesterday I made Janice the deputy moderator. Now, you don't need to come up here, but I'm gonna step away from here to make my comment.
And it's a question. If the use is changed from the church to, say, a commercial use, would that require new standards to be met and approval by the planning board?
Well, that would be a question for the code enforcement officer, but the chair of the planning board is here, and he could probably suggest an answer to that if he's comfortable with that.
Yes.
It would require a...
A review?
Review.
And you'd run into the same problem, the 20,000 square foot, 20,000 square foot minimum per state set. Ken, you have any?
Yes.
The only reason too is why Patty Parker brought this to us is there's only two people left, I guess, that are in the church society, and they're just basically just running out of funds, and there's nobody that is willing or stepping into that position to do the bake sales, to do the fundraisers, to keep the building up. So, they don't really just know what to do with it. So, this is why they brought it to us, and we kinda... Me and Ron kinda spoke of it as, you know, we'll give any feedback or, you know, any mention to her of, you know, what you folks think, suggestions. I mean, we'd be happy to present it to them if we so decide not to take the building.
Is there further discussion? Yes, Ron?
They're at their wit's end. They don't know what to do or how to proceed with that building, and they're not realtors. They're not, you know... They're frustrated with the building right now is what... The point that they're at. And to your point, it's not that we're trying to make money off the building, is rather than see someone else make that profit, why not the town? And I understand your point. The building is nice.
It's very good shape.
Because I guess you have to hope that someone's gonna buy it with good intent, and they'll figure out something to do, whether they buy some land from Winnebago that's big enough to do something with it, which is a possibility, so...
And their poriums...
Why would we go into it thinking, let's tear down a building? I don't think that should be the town's intent.
Is there further discussion? I assume we're ready to vote, then. One last one there, yes.
Is there another group willing to take it over, or a group of other citizens that would like to form another committee to try to keep this building?
I don't... I don't believe there is, not to our knowledge, and I don't know that the members of the society have really gone, looked past that. I think, you know, if the town decided not to purchase the... Or not to accept this gift, and people are interested in it, I think the society is looking for a solution. They may be very willing to accept almost any offer at this point.
Are we ready to vote?
Well, I just want... Could I make one?
I'm gonna take... Yes.
I would just like to ask if we should decide, because we don't... We're just hearing about this. If we said no, does that mean we could have a chance to vote on it again next year? I mean, if they've got $1,400, $1,500 in their insurance, is 600, they would be able to keep it for one more year, and then maybe some investigation could be done rather than to just turn it down totally?
If the article is turned down, it can always be brought up again at another time?
Yes.
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 Brent?
And that was one thing that we did mention to Patty.
That's one of the options.
One of the options, we could table this for now, and if we wanted to do a little more research or digging or whatever, then that's... We did mention that to her when we met with her up there the other day. They just... Like I said, she's just looking for kind of a solution. She wants to move forward. She wants to, you know, she wants to do whatever's gonna happen.
Gene, did you have something more to add?
I guess I just was going to say, you know, it's like, I think that's a great solution. I guess I would really recommend that we turn it down, giving us... Giving some people a chance to perhaps reach out to them and find an alternative.
No, not table it. Vote it down. Gary, I'm gonna have to... We've had quite a bit of discussion. We've got to move on here, so I'm gonna... I'm gonna say we're ready to vote, Gary, so...
This is just one quick question. There is another community-based organization that may consider taking it over, it just has to be brought before them.
Okay, then let's... I'd like to vote now. So, I'm gonna read the article again. What's that, Ron?
There was a question about a motion.
Can I make a motion to table this?
Voting it down does the same thing.
I think we have one motion on the ta... On... One motion now is to approve or not to approve. And motion to table really is not a motion for town meetings. It may be for other meetings, but it's not for town meeting. We want an up or down. It can always be brought up at a future date, so I'm gonna read it. "To see if the town will accept the donation of the Porter Union Church and the funds held in the name of the Porter Union Church for its repair and maintenance." All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Say nay? Okay. The article is voted down. Article seven, tax-related articles. "To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of 612,000, established for Porter by the state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the following articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that of the property tax levy limit." Is there a motion?
Second.
Article seven's been moved in second. Is there discussion of Article seven? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article seven is approved. Article eight, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer the authority to use the tax lien waiver foreclosure process," Title 36 MRSA, Section 944. Is there a motion?
Move the article as read.
Second.
Is there discussion of Article eight? Is there a discussion of article eight? Yes.
So is this the, if the tax lien for 18 months?
There's an automatic foreclosure on the property.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the whole question.
Okay, my question is, is what this about? Is it if there's a lien on a property for 18 months, the town can do an automatic foreclosure?
Yes, there also, but there is a notice of automatic foreclosure that's mailed to the owner before that date, before it happens.
And how long before it happens?
Janice, do you remember what that is?
It's automatic at the end of 18 months.
But when do we send the notice of the automatic foreclosure?
Thirty days before, I believe.
Thirty days before the automatic foreclosure.
So the person only has 30 days to move out?
No, that's not entirely true. All the foreclosure does is, is change the ownership from the delinquent taxpayer to the town of Porter.
And then would the town of Porter have that person move out?
Typically, we haven't. It's, it is a possibility. It's, it's a situation that require, each situation requires consideration.
Because my concern is for seniors who are struggling to pay their taxes.
Well, Title 36 MRSA, Section 94, has been a change so that those citizens over 65 have a different process that you have to go through with a lot more notification.
My understanding is that's not in place yet.
Yep, it's, it's-
It is in place.
We are currently-
Following it.
-operating under that-
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion of article eight? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article eight is approved. Article nine, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell any and all tax-acquired property, whether by foreclosure of tax liens or acquired by court action by sealed bid, except that municipal officers shall use the special sale process required by 36 MRSA, Section 943(c) for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell to anyone other than the former owners. The sale or sales shall first be advertised in three successive weeks in your weekly shopping guide or a newspaper of general circulation in the local area, and to execute and deliver municipal quitclaim deeds for the same, provided, however, the select board in their discretion may offer and sell any such property to the former owner against whom the tax had been assessed or to the successor or successors in interest to that person. The select board reserves the right to reject any and all bids." Is there a motion?
Move the article as so carefully writ, read.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion of article nine?
I'd just like to clarify a point from the last article, the question, that 944 is not the article, the section that covers that. It's 943(c) that's noted here, which requires us to go through a different process for those older than 65. Small point, but just to be clear.
Further discussion of article nine? Yes.
And we're able to sell it to someone in the family? I thought there was an arms-length rule.
And 943(c) requires us to, the short plan is that we have to market the house as a market value, or market the property for its market value, and the owner can purchase the property back, or, or if whatever proceeds beyond the tax due is returned to the owner. It's essentially how that, what happens there.
Is there further discussion of article nine? Yes.
So you're saying that you would sell the property at the market value, and the town would collect the additional revenue versus the tax?
The town would collect that, the total amount that, for whatever the bid was. It doesn't mean that it would get sold at market value. Whatever the sale price was, the town is then required to return any proceeds beyond the tax due on the property to the former owner.
Further discussion? Ready to vote? I'll call for a vote on article nine. All those in favor of what I just read? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article nine is approved. Article 10, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to use funds from undesignated fund balance as they deem advisable to reduce the tax commitment for the fiscal year 2019." Is there a motion? We moved in second. Is there discussion of article 10? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 10 is approved. Article 11, "To see if the town will vote to establish January 15, 2020, as the date when the 2019 real estate and personal property taxes will be due and payable, and to establish a rate of 9% interest to be charged on all unpaid taxes as of that date. The maximum allowable rate by the state is 9% per annum." Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a discussion of article 11? Yes.
Is, it used to be February 1st? Is that right?
That's correct.
Is that moving to the 15th?
We've discussed this, I think, in the past, certainly the Budget Committee had a discussion, and they may want to weigh in on this. The town commits taxes in August, and the due date for taxes, to pay taxes is, has been January 31st, the end of the fiscal year, which means that the town goes from August to January 31st with the potential for people not paying their taxes. That doesn't happen, but most towns require payment, some towns within 30 days, some within 60 days. I think the select board's intent is to continue to move this date back until we're somewhere closer to perhaps 90 or 120 days so that we don't run into a position where we have to borrow money to get through to the end of the fiscal year to pay bills.
Yes.
How often have we had to borrow money?
We have not had to borrow money probably for four or five years, but I will say that the months from December, mid-December through January, we are very carefully considering what bills to pay in order to keep enough money from our undesignated fund balance to pay bills. And without the incentive to pay early that we dropped last year, which we fully agreed with, there has been a small decrease in that early payment, which used to get us through most of the year, and we're considering that that's, potentially that will happen, will increase. More people will know about it this year. Many people didn't understand that we dropped that 2% discount, and we believe this year there'll probably be a greater number of people paying later than earlier.
Is there further discussion of article 11? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 11 is approved. Article 12, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes for the year 2019, not yet due or assessed, and to pay interest at the rate of 3% per annum on such prepayments made prior to the commitment of those taxes. Prepayments not to exceed the previous year's tax. Said interest on prepayments of taxes shall be taken from undesignated fund balance as needed," Title 36 MRSA, Section 506. Is there a motion?
Move the article as read.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article 12?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of let people understand about this, because always before you got a tax bill, and when you got your tax bill, it said if you paid by a certain date, you would save some money. And we got rid of that last year. But we didn't realize, or at least I didn't realize, that if you paid before you ever got a bill, because every year you kind of know what you're going to pay because it's the same amount of property, and so if you sort of figure out, oh, last year I paid X amount of dollars in September, I can pay that amount in July, and I can save some money because this bill says that I have a 3% savings if I pay ahead of time, even though I haven't gotten a bill. So I just wanted to get people to understand what this article is.
Further discussion? Hearing-
Well, I, the select board is, recommends this article, and I believe the Budget Committee was, supports the recommendation.
Yes.
Who's paying the interest?
You are. It comes out of, as it says, it comes from the undesignated fund balance, which is the money that we haven't spent in prior years that sits there. We use that for reducing taxes and for our, to pay bills until taxes.
But why are we doing this and taking, when we took away the early prepayment? What, why did we choose to take away that and add this?
Because, well, we've always had this. But what this does is restrict how much money someone can prepay. It's possible that if I owed $1,500 in taxes, I could prepay a significantly larger amount and, and get my tax bill reduced that way, by prepaying that money. So basically, what we did was, we added a restriction that you can only prepay last year's tax amount, which seems fair. We don't know what this year's tax is going to be until we sit down and run all the numbers in July. So we feel like people want to prepay. That's good. We can always use the money in there, but it's best to limit it to that last year's taxes.
Yes.
So in essence, the person who prepays in this system is the lender, and the town is the borrower.
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, good point.
Yes, Judy.
So we're not at all concerned that more people that know that they've lost the 2% if they pay will now start paying early and-
Yes, and that, that's, and, and the best-
Oh, no, it's dear.
I think the best we can do is limit that amount that they can pay so that they don't, I mean, they still will get actually a larger discount, but.
Rob, do you, does the town get interest on that money that the people prepay?
Yes, it does go into, I mean, it would, if, if we get enough money, it gets shifted into our interest-bearing account.
Further discussion? I'll call for a vote on article 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article carries. Article 13, "To see if the vote, see if the town will vote to set the rate of interest paid on overpayment of taxes at 5%. In accordance with Title 36 MRSA, Section 506(a), the interest rate can be no less than 4% below the per annum rate charged on delinquent taxes. Said interest on overpayment of taxes shall be taken from undesignated fund balance as needed." Is there a motion?
Move the article as read.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article 13? Gene.
Yeah, we sent in on the 5%. It seems like we've taken away two, but we've got like, I'm having a hard time understanding.
This is complicated, and, and these articles are actually, I think there's, they've been modified slightly because we realized that we weren't meeting the state legal requirements, or it wasn't clear that, that we were doing it. In this case, if someone were to pay their taxes and then we discover there's a mistake and have to repay their, repay them, they have to be paid a rate. The state says, they have to be paid interest. We've been holding their money by mistake. The state says either you pay at the rate you selected for delinquent taxes, or you can lower it to no less than 4%. So this is the lowest, what you're, what we're proposing is that you, the town, elect to pay the lowest interest rate legally allowed.
Further discussion of article 13? And I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 13 is approved. Article 14, "To see if the town will vote to direct the tax collector/treasurer to apply any tax payment received for any property to outstanding or delinquent taxes owed, and in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill," Title 36 MRSA, Section 906. Is there a motion?
Move the motion as read.
Is there discussion of article 14? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 14 is approved. General Administration. Article 15, "To see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the town officer's salaries account for the ensuing year and to authorize the select board to transfer all clerk fees to the town officer's salaries account to be expended from the same." The Budget Committee recommends raise $152,000 and transfer all clerk fees, clerk fees. Is there a motion?
I move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Is there a discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment to this article. I'd like to amend the amount to be raised to $148,000.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Now we'll proceed with a discussion of the amendment. Is there any discussion of the amendment?
Aye. We, when we presented this article to the Budget Committee, we had anticipated more, more salary, more hours added to staff, and when we, after we got through the Budget Committee, we went back and reviewed that and determined that we had overestimated the, the amount of money, the, the amount of hours that we would need, and therefore the amount of money. And so we're reducing it to what we think we will need for the year.
Is there further discussion of the amendment?
How does this compare to last year?
Last year, we raised 145.
Further discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment is to change the amount from 152,000 to 148,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the amendment passes. Now I will read the article with the proper amount in there. "To see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the town officer's salaries account for the ensuing year to authorize the select board to transfer all clerk fees to the town officer's salaries account to be expended from the same. Budget Committee recommends 152,000. The amendment has changed that to 148,000." All those in favor of the article as read?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 15 carries, is approved as amended. You got, Janice, you got the, the amount?
I did.
That was easy. Article 16, "To what sum, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the officer account and to authorize the select board to enter all income received from the rental space, photocopying fees, and fax fees into this account to be expended from the same. Budget Committee recommends raise $53,000 and add income from rental space, photocopying fees, and fax fees." Is there a motion?
The Budget Committee's recommendation.
I think we can take 10,000 out of it, though.
Budget Committee's recommendation has been moved in second.
We didn't spend 12,000.
Is there discussion of article 16?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to add an amendment to this article also. I would reduce the fee, the amount raised to $43,000. And if you look, so I, I would explain that if, if the amendment is-
Let's give a second here. Been seconded, yes, Rob.
Okay, on, I think it's page 27 of the Treasurer's Report, and that may not be, no, that's not right. Twenty, if we look at the office account on page 28, there was, on the top of the right-hand column- there was on the top of the right-hand column, at the bottom of that, right above insurance, it says lapse to undesignated fund, $12,280. The value of not carrying funds forward that we discussed last year at length is that we now see clearly how much money we didn't spend in the accounts. That $12,000 wasn't spent. We're not anticipating any significant increases in the office account this year. It would be my recommendation if the Budget Committee is amenable and the staff doesn't raise any other issues that we reduce this amount by $10,000.
Is there further discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment to reduce the $53,000 to $43,000. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Now we will vote on the article as amended. To see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the office account and to authorize the Select Board to enter all income received from rental space, photocopying fees, and fax fees into this account to be expended from the same. The amount is now $43,000 as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 16 is approved as amended. To see what sum of money the town...Article 17, to see what money...sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for insurance account, including workers' compensation insurance. Budget Committee recommends raise $11,000. Is there a motion?
I move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion of Article 17? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 17 is approved. Article 18, to see if the town will raise and appropriate for the debt payment account to be expended for the 2019 payment on the main municipal bond. Budget Committee recommends this article. Is there a motion?
I move the article.
Is there a discussion of Article 18? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 18 is approved. Article 19, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate to cover the interest on a tax anticipation note for the fiscal year 2019. Budget Committee recommends raise $11,000. Is there a motion?
Move the article as read?
Second.
And that would include the Budget Committee's...
Recommendation.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there a discussion of Article 19? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 19 is approved. Article 20, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the contingent account to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during the fiscal year 2019. Budget Committee recommends raise $60,000. Is there a motion?
Some vote?
Second.
I believe that's the recommendation of the Budget Committee of $60,000. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 20 is approved. Article 21, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the cemetery's account to be expended for repairs and maintenance of old cemeteries in the town of Porter. Budget Committee recommends raise $2,000. Is there a motion?
I move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of Article 21? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 21 is approved. Article 22, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the ball field account to be expended for maintenance of the Kizer Falls Ball Field. Budget Committee recommends $500. Is there a motion?
I move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of Article 22? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 22 is approved. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept donations of items or monetary donations not to exceed $1,000 per donation and made without conditions other than the dedication to a town budget account. All monetary donations to be deposited in the undesignated fund surplus. Any donation exceeding $1,000 will require town approval at a special town meeting. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Is there a discussion of Article 23? Yes, Peter.
I'm just wondering if my activity stimulated this motion. Are we being flooded with donations?
Unfortunately not. I think that the Board just thought if there were small donations that come in, it would be easier than going back to the town for each small donation. But the...we consulted with MMA and they're a little uncomfortable with this because the law says that any donation has to be approved by the town. But they agreed that that small amount would probably pass muster.
And I believe under this, the union church would qualify.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there further discussion of Article 23? Yes.
Can I suggest an amendment?
You may.
I'd like to amend it to include per year because there is a history of surrounding towns receiving donations that might sway their feelings, we'll say. And this, to me, leaves a window for somebody to give, say, $1,000 a day all year long. Just to shore it up.
Is there a second to the motion?
I would second that motion.
To the amendment, excuse me. The amendment has been moved in second. Is there discussion of the amendment?
Yeah, just one question. Why would we want to refuse that?
I'll just bring up Denmark, for example. They receive large donations from a large corporation that's multinational. And it...it does change opinions in the town because they...they give this money to the town in a certain way.
Is there further discussion of the amendment?
So just to be clear, this is $1,000 a day? Ah, a year!
Nice try, Rick.
$1,000 a year.
Or with a town vote.
Every five minutes.
To add a year, but still include if someone wants to donate a lot of money, we come to the town.
That's correct.
$1,000 per year donation.
Any further discussion of the amendment? Okay, I'm going to try and read this with the amendment. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept donations of items or monetary donations not to exceed $1,000 per donation per year and made without conditions other than dedication to the town budget account. All monetary donations to be deposited into the undesignated fund surplus. Any donation exceeding $1,000 will require town approval at a special town meeting. Does that include annual town meeting?
Per donation or per donor? Well, it says at a special town meeting. So at an annual town meeting, we could not decide. We could only do it at a special town meeting.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have...I should not have changed the amendment. I just...it just stuck to me.
I move to amend.
Well, I will accept...
One at a time.
I'll accept the person who made the amendment to make that change, if you wish.
To include a special town meeting or annual town meeting?
Might just strike the word at special town meeting and leave it at town approval.
Is that...was that your intention?
At a town meeting?
Town approval, whether it's special or not. If...
All right, so the amendment then is $1,000 per year. We're going to vote on the amendment here if I can straighten this out. I should not have opened my mouth. Any donation exceeding $1,000 will require town approval. At a town... If...at a town meeting, okay.
The only way the town can approve...it actually ought to be...it ought to read, "Any donation exceeding $1,000 will require approval by the legislative body," which is you, "which can only happen at a town meeting, special or regular." So perhaps changing it... Will require...to...will require legislative body approval would solve the whole problem.
Are you okay with that?
I...I am perfect.
Okay.
One more thing, Ken?
Yes.
Should it say per donor? Ms. Janice brought this up to us. You're trying to...
Aren't you concerned with the donor and not the donation?
You're concerned with the donor as well as the donation. So if it...should say something about a particular donor not to exceed the...
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Ken, we gotta have you all twisted up.
Okay, so it's...I would make a motion to amend it to say $1,000 per year...
Per donor.
Donation or...or donor or in or organization.
Donor and/or organization.
An approval of the legislative body, too.
Approval of the legislative body.
All right. Is there further discussion of this amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries. I'm not going to bother to read the whole thing again. I'm going to say $1,000 per donation, per donor, per year. And it requires approval of the legislative body. Is there further discussion of the motion of the article? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 23 is approved as amended. Do you...Janice, do you have the amendment?
I did.
Okay.
Eventually.
I think it's good that we do these things, actually. They get clearer. Article 24, to see if the town will authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend grant money available from the state of Maine, federal government, or other organizations for any public purpose when they deem it to be in the town's best interest and need matching funds and needed matching funds are available within the current budget. Is there a motion for Article 24?
So moves.
It's been moved in second. Is there a discussion of Article 24? Is there someone other than you for just a minute? Let someone else talk? All right.
I'll try to keep it simple. I feel that the word organization is too broad because you could also end up tangled in some kind of grant given to you without a real path of repayment. So I would suggest an amendment to say or other non...not-for-profit organizations.
I don't...I'm going to rule that that's not in the nature of this article to change that. It's...I think that's limiting in a way that's not intended in the article.
Well, we can vote it up or down.
Well, yes, you can vote it up or down. But if you vote it down, then we're not allowed to accept grants. So either make the amendment or accept the article as read.
All right, I'll reverse myself just for convenience and...
I'm sorry, I didn't...I didn't mean to imply that you were wrong. I agree with Ron's...with Ken's understanding. I believe that's a substantive change. If you limit...if you change the wording from organization to nonprofit, you've significantly limited...significantly changed the article, which is not allowed under the substantive change rule, I think because people may have read it, agreed with it, and said, "I'm not bothering coming to town meeting." So while I understand your concern, it might be something we address in the future.
And you can always address that with the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, God, thanks, pal.
Further discussion of Article 24? Yes.
So how is this different from the previous article? Really, in a sense, what about this...
This is to...
Corporations give grants.
That's right. And there's a much more formal structure than just someone coming up and saying, "Here's...here's $1,000." For instance, the Conservation Commission, for several years, has applied for a milfoil grant which has restrictions on...for both parties. It's a very formal agreement. It seems to me a safer way to do business, but we still are required by the state to... The town, the legislative body, has to give the Select Board approval to accept grants. So that's why this article is in here.
Right, but the part, the organization part, that's what I'm concerned about. Well, what keeps the...this organization from just giving it as a grant rather than a donation? I mean, isn't it the same thing, really?
It may be. The only thing I think is that the grants then are...you know, it's very clear what the standards are for that, for the disposal of those funds and what the purpose is.
I also believe that the last part of the last sentence included...includes needed matching funds are available within the current budget. Allows them to use the matching funds. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article is approved. Boards and committees. Article 25, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Porter Planning Board and Appeals Board account. The Budget Committee recommends raise $1,500. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion of Article 25? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 25 is approved. Article 26, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Porter Comprehensive Plan Update Committee account. Budget Committee recommends raise $500. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 26 is approved. Article 27, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Porter Conservation Commission. Budget Committee recommends raise $1,000 and transfer $181.20 to the Milfoil Reserve Fund. Is there a motion?
I move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of Article 27?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment to the Budget Committee recommendation, which is to change the amount of money transferred to the Milfoil Reserve Fund. I'd like to offer that we transfer $691.80 to the Milfoil Reserve Fund.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a discussion of the amendment?
Yes, there was a mistake in the calculation of how much money that we owed to that reserve account from last year. Money that was spent from basically the wrong account. It should have been...come out of grant money. So this will correct that...that balance. It adds more to the Milfoil Reserve Fund. It's really just moving the money type of...where it should be.
Official posted amount does say $691.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so...
Posted warrant.
Yeah, it's in the warrant, so we... But the motion was made to approve 181.20. So I think for the purpose of this, they need to know... that the amount is, that, we need to correct the amount that was offered here.
Can we?
It's not an amendment.
Can we, did you make the motion?
I did make a motion, and it was seconded.
No, I'm talking about the original, who made the original motion? Kathy, would you like to change to six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents? All right.
Required, I would withdraw my amendment.
Okay, that's good. Is there a discussion of this? Six ninety-one eighty plus one thousand dollars, raise the one thousand dollars. No amendment. Okay, there's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Jen.
Article twenty-seven is approved with the amount six ninety-one eighty. Public Works. Article twenty-eight, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the roads account to be spent on repairs and maintenance of roads for the ensuing year. The Budget Committee recommends raise one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and transfer the unexpendited balance of thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and three cents to the road construction reserve account. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article twenty-eight? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article twenty-eight is approved. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to review any and all road work to be done, and if they deem advisable, to let the work out to private contractor by hourly rate or by bid. Is there a motion? Is there a discussion of article twenty-nine? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-nine is approved. Thirty, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the winter roads account for the ensuing year. Budget Committee recommends raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Same, same amount.
It's just the same as last year.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty is approved. Article thirty-one, to see what sum of, sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the solid waste account for the ensuing year. Budget Committee recommends raise ninety thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-one is approved. Article thirty-two, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal control account. Budget Committee recommends raise two thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our third, article, hmm, article thirty-two is approved. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the maintenance of the Keizer Falls Fire Department. Budget Committees raise, recommends raise fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-three is approved. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars for the maintenance and operation of Sacapi Rescue to be dispersed in three payments in April, August, and November. Budget Committee recommends twenty-four thousand, two hundred. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-four is approved. Article thirty-five, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the streetlights account for the ensuing year. Budget Committee recommends raise fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-five is approved. Article thirty-six, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the hydrants account for the ensuing year. Budget Committee recommends raise fifty-one thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Tried.
Opposed? Okay, uh, the Budget Committee, our, uh, the article is approved.
Can I just, just add something to that?
Yes, briefly.
Briefly, yeah, briefly. Ron so kindly was brought up about the fire hydrants in town, about doing away with them, doing away with a certain portion of them, or something to get that number down. That number is set by the PUC, correct? By the number of gallons of water used within our town. And Ron, you can take it from here.
The, the major factor is, what they take into account is how many private fire suppression systems you have in a town. Sprinklers. We don't have very many, so that boosts the rate up. Every town is done the same way. Longville, there's one town up near Jackman that really gets hit big time because they have absolutely no buildings in a sprinkler, and they have, I think it was fewer hydrants than we have, and they end up paying more per hydrant. This is a per hydrant fee. There's basically nothing we can do. What we tried, we tried to work with the fire department, see if we could reduce the number and therefore reduce the cost. It's not going to make a whole lot of difference.
And that article has been approved.
Right, yeah, just an explanation of why is that cost.
Yep. Article thirty-seven, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the E nine-one-one communications account to be expended for the dispatch of E nine-one-one calls through the state, calls through the main state police. Budget Committee recommends nine thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment on this to change the Budget Committee recommendation to eight thousand dollars.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a discussion?
Any question about coverage? How, in a sense, is how much coverage the nine-one-one has in Porter in terms of cell coverage?
My understanding is that, that cellphone, nine-one-one phone calls are routed to the nearest tower, which then refers it to the state police directly to, to the, this communication center who are paying this, this money for. So if there's cellphone coverage, there is nine-one-one coverage for cellphones. Otherwise, it's landline.
I have a correction. I think Fire Department Rescue can verify this. Depending on where the tower, the tower location is here, fine, it'll go where it's supposed to go, but if it's, if you're someplace closer to another cell tower, that cell tower will send it somewhere else. Am I correct, or?
The cell towers here will go to Oxford first. Oxford transfers to York, then York calls Augusta. So it gets bounced around.
This doesn't affect the landline nine-one-one, that'll go direct. Cellphone is the one that's in question.
Is there further discussion of the amendment? Then we should vote on the amendment. The amendment was to reduce the amount from nine thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the, I will read the article again as amended. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the E nine-one, nine-one-one communications account to be expended for the dispatch of E nine-one-one calls through the main state police, we will raise eight thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-seven is approved as amended. Article thirty-eight, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the general assistance account. Budget Committee recommends raise two thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Is there a discussion?
What was it last year?
Same.
Same? And it's all being used?
Well, actually, I would offer an amendment to reduce that to one thousand dollars because the state reimburses us for a portion of what we spend. We, we returned eighteen, almost eighteen hundred dollars to lapse to the undesignated fund balance, so I believe we can probably get by with a thousand.
Is there a second to the amendment? Okay. Did you want to say something else, Ron? Ron, I'm sorry, Rob.
Sorry.
Looking right past you.
As I said, we lapsed almost the entire amount to, to undesignated fund balance, so I don't believe we need to raise that money. And also, we are required to support a general assistance applicant if they're approved, no matter how much money we raise in this. If we overexpend this account, we have to pay the money. We go to our contingent account to draw the money, or we come back for a special town meeting.
Discussion of the amendment, just a minute. Okay.
And why would you lower the amount if we're obligated to pay general assistance?
Because I'm, I'm looking at how much we, we, how much we paid out, how much we are reimbursed, and we don't need the two thousand. I think we can get by with a thousand. Our, our general assistance applications have been very low this year. I think the economy is, has something to do with that.
Is there further discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment, which is to change the two thousand to one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll read the article as amended. To see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the general assistance account, we will raise one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-eight is approved as amended. Article thirty-nine, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Porter High School Memorial Account. Budget Committee recommends raise one thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article thirty-nine? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty-nine is approved. Article forty, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the capital improvements reserve fund. Budget Committee recommends raise ten thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty is approved. Article forty-one, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the old Porter Meeting House Reserve Fund to be expended for repairs and maintenance of the old Porter Meeting House. Budget Committee recommends five thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-one is approved. Article forty-two, to see if the town will authorize the transfer of revenue generated from vital record fees to the Records Restoration Reserve Fund. Budget Committee recommends this article. Is there a motion?
Move the articles, Ron.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-two is approved. Article forty-three, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the revaluation reserve fund to be expended for the revaluation of property in the town of Porter for tax purposes. Budget Committee recommends raise fifteen thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of forty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Is there a discussion of article forty-three? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-three is approved. Article forty-four, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Keizer Falls Fire Department Equipment Reserve Fund. Budget Committee recommends raise ten thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of fifty-one thousand, forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget, move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article forty-four? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-four is approved. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars for the Sacapi Rescue Reserve Fund. Budget Committee recommends raise ten thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of twenty-one thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article forty-five? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-five is approved. Article forty-six, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Bridge Reserve Fund. Budget Committee recommends raise five thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Could you tell us what the reserve fund is, the bridge reserve fund?
I can't, but they can.
It's a fund for capital improvements on the bridges in town. We have, actually, we own one bridge now on the dam road, which is going to need work or replacement at some point in the future. Done.
It's not a bridge anymore.
Not a bridge, that's right. We, we, it's now a culvert. Which is, but.
Is there further discussion of, of article forty-six? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-six carries. Article forty-seven, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the dam reserve fund. Said funds to be expended by the select board for the repair or replacement of the town's dams, including engineering, tests, permits, pursuing grants, et cetera. Budget Committee recommends raise five thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion of article forty-seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-seven is approved. Article forty-eight, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the road reconstruction reserve fund. And said projects to be at the discretion of the select board. Budget Committee recommends raise thirty-five thousand dollars, transfer from the DOT fund reserve as needed, and carry forward the unexpendited balance of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-eight is approved. Article forty-nine, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the sidewalk reserve fund to be expended for replacing, upgrading, or constructing sidewalks. Budget Committee recommends raise three thousand dollars and carry forward the unexpendited balance of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Gary.
How much did we spend on replacing the sidewalks this past year?
A little under forty, I think.
I'll have to recognize you for the second part.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yep, oh, thirty-five.
About thirty-five thousand.
Okay, Gary.
Well, during February vacation, I'm driving through town, and our high school kids and our students are walking down the road because none of the sidewalks in the village, other than the bridge, are clear. What's the use of having these sidewalks and spending the money if the kids and the people and the elderly are walking in the street to get places? What's the use of having these sidewalks and spending the money if the kids and the people and the elderly are walking in the street to get places? You know, either the property owners or somebody's got to be responsible to clear the sidewalks.
Brett?
I think we all definitely agree with your concern and hear where you're coming from and agree with you. We kind of looked at it, Gary, as, and it was kind of brought to our attention as well, as we can do it. It's a major liability. I mean, it's a liability for the town. You clear them, they get slippery, the elderly slips, kid falls, or whatever. So there's two sides of the coin, I guess, that you kind of got to look at. Talked about appropriating money of maintaining them, but we don't really know where that would stand. So it's kind of a... I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you.
Ron?
Thank you. The other issue is where do you put the snow? There's no room to put it between the sidewalk and the road. And when they plow the roads, it's going to come back onto the sidewalk, so you may have to do it twice. The other thing is, where's the snow going to go? On a property owner's land, driveway, whatever. You want to take those phone calls?
There was someone other than Gary over here. Peter?
I was curious what they did a hundred years ago.
I wasn't around, I can't tell you.
Does the liability fall on the landowner, or is it on the town? If somebody's walking down the street and they slip and fall? Is there a law that addresses that?
I'm not sure. I know that in, well, a lot of the cities, it's the property owner's responsibility to clear the sidewalk. I don't know if there's an amendment that they have that states that. I think we would probably have to do that, if that's something you wanted to do. I don't know how it would go. I'm not sure on that part. But we did discuss it, and there are a lot of issues that come into play in doing that.
So that might be a motion at the next town meeting that would have, be a result of research on, that the state would provide to us, on what the legal liabilities are, where they fall. And so that we might then come up with a way of deciding if there is a strategy we want to finance to make those people, children and adults, less liable.
If anyone has a specific idea, let us know. We're open to suggestions.
In your dis...
Kathy?
In your discussion, did you come up with any kind of cost to keeping the sidewalks removed? Was, I thought we did, two years, it was really expensive and it didn't work out. Whoever did it didn't follow through, right?
I mentioned it to our current snowplow contractor. He just said a law. I mean, that was all that we got. You know, because of what Ron said. I mean, you clear it, you plow, you set banks, you clear it, you plow, you clear the sidewalk. You know, it's multiple times that you'd have to manage it and maintain it.
Or remove the sidewalk?
What they do in Hiram is the plow comes by and plows part of it, but they have no poles, no signs in the way. We do. So we can't do that.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of Article forty-nine?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Article forty-nine is approved. Article fifty, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Tri-Town Waste Reserve Fund and to authorize the Select Board to withdraw funds from the reserve as needed for the capital expenses at the Tri-Town Waste Disposal Facility. Budget Committee recommends raise $15,000 and carry forward the unexpendited balance of $36,400. Is there a motion?
Move the Budget Committee recommendation?
Is there a discussion? Gary?
Do all three towns have a reserve fund like this for the, similar? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Then I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article fifty is approved. Local organizations. Article fifty-one, to see if the town will authorize the use of town-owned buildings by outside organizations, groups, or individuals, and charge a fee and other requirements as outlined in the facility's use policy for the use of said properties to help cover town expenses. Fees collected to be deposited into the office account. Is there a motion?
Move the Article...
Is there a discussion of Article fifty-one? Yes.
The way the current facility use policy is written, it's any town property. So that would include the old town, the meeting house, for which we sometimes get a fee. Embarrass me. I'm embarrassed. I don't remember what the fee structure is, what we charge by the hour. Considering this space is the most sought-after space, is a charge for the, an hourly charge for the room or for the kitchen. There's also a half-day fee.
And what is the fee to rent this space?
Embarrassingly. I'm embarrassed, I don't...
No, that's okay.
Ron's doing the research right now.
But is there, I guess I want to expand on that, for nonprofits, if a nonprofit wants to use this space?
There isn't currently. There is an option for the Select Board to waive a fee.
Brett?
This is a common discussion we have. Me and Rob battle on this quite often. The thought process of it is, yes, there is a waiver fee that is possible to get if people want to come in and do it, and the Select Board has the right to accept or reject. The only thing that I would want to say, you know, as, I guess, a selectman for you folks is, I would... I guess I'm not in favor of wavering the fee. I mean, this is an expensive building, it needs to be upkeep, it needs to be replaced, you know, carpet. Everything gets used in here. And it's an expense, you know, and it's an expense. And the more you use it, it's going to get abused. Is taxpayers paying for it? Yes, they are. But I'm not... I know, Gene. I'm just not, you know, I don't... I'm just not in favor. I mean, I think something, small donation, if, you know, something gets built on the carpet or something. I mean, how are we going to pay to clean? It's got to be, it's a cost. It's got to be paid to be clean, you know. Ding, ding in the walls, it's got to be painted. It's an expense. It is an expense.
Is there a question other than revolving around waiving? Because that's not part of the article here. Ron?
I have the rates. The minimum fee for use of any town facility is $25 per hour for a maximum of seventy-five people. $40 per hour for use of the kitchen. A half-day rate before hours is $80. A half-day rate with the kitchen is $100. There's a key policy also, including a deposit will be adhered to for any use requiring access to the building or other secured facility.
Yes.
I'm thinking that we paid for this building. And wondering if requested by Porter resident. If either there could be a waiver, or if not a waiver, then a lower fee. We don't have too many good places to meet around here. And this is a good one. And it seems to me that a fee that was more like ten bucks an hour, say, rather than twenty-five, would... You know, if you have an event, say, for two and a half hours, then you're talking, what, sixty, sixty-five dollars? Seems a bit steep. If it was, say, ten bucks an hour, well, that's affordable. Unless, if the town, does the town honestly feel that twenty-five bucks an hour is required in order to recover costs?
The cleaning lady, I think, is...
She's thirty bucks an hour.
She's thirty bucks an hour. And I kind of look at this as a couple of different ways also. I mean, I kind of look at, compare it to like the sand pile, you know. We vote, town pays for the sand pile, but we voted, you know, everybody agreed that we can't just go down and dig into our sand pile for our driveways. I kind of compare the building and the structure to the same thing down there. You know, we're down there, but we can't here. And I think this is, you know, this, I just hate to see this get abused with no funds and nothing to be able to put back into it, that's all. I think you've got to protect your investment on every level, in my opinion.
This is a point of order. This article is about whether to see whether the town will authorize town-owned buildings to be used by outside organization groups or individuals and to charge a fee as outlined in the facility's use policy. So I think these discussions are of the facility's use policy. Is that something we have approved? Or is that a policy by the selectman?
That's a policy that the Select Board put together in response to our concerns. This article is here because we are in the process of revisiting our policy. And in that process, we got some legal advice. And MMA said, first of all, you've got to have permission from the town to do this. So that's the purpose of this article. Once this article is in place, the next step will be to review our policy. And it's clear that there needs to be public review of the policy. We do it at a public meeting or Select Board meetings, but those are not heavily attended. It may be, you know, better to announce when that policy is reviewed, so that we can get some public input.
I see there are more comments. I'd like to take them, but remember that the facility's policy, use policy, is a different question. Peter?
I hope this is pertinent, but I like Doug's idea of lowering the fee for Porter residents to $10 an hour. With the concern that you raised, Brett, that there could be damage, maybe a security department to cover that. Because certainly it isn't fair for the town to have to pay for the cost.
Oh, boy, okay.
It is my understanding that anybody who does want to use this building has to contact their insurance to have... So that it would be covered if there was a damage? So you really are covered in one respect that way. So I do, I do agree that, you know, a small fee, maybe, the $10 is probably doable for most people. The twenty-five, I think is...
I just thought you didn't cover the wear. You're not covering the wear and tear. That's my thought.
I think the $10 would, and if there's something more, it would be responsible for the person. Hold them accountable for the person that's doing it, not everybody who hasn't made it.
I think we're arguing about a policy that the selectman and Rob has just explained. This is just giving permission for the selectman to go ahead and let the building out. And that the money would be deposited into the office account. Anybody have a question about those two issues of this? Yes, Judy?
Well, I just, I just picked up on the outside, outside organizations, groups, or individuals. So does, I mean, are we talking about non-Porter residents, non-Porter organizations, non-Porter groups?
I asked, they can explain that. I think that they're referring to groups that are not the planning board, not the appeals board, like that.
But the Historical Society would be considered an outside organization. The Library would be considered an outside organization.
So outside of the town government.
So the purpose is that any organization outside of town government, a town function, would be required?
Okay, Gary?
I make a motion to move the article?
We've already moved it. All right, so hearing no further discussion, and I don't hear any.
Don't ask too long.
Let's vote on Article fifty-one, to see if the town will authorize the use of town-owned buildings, so on and so forth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd encourage anyone with these questions to attend a selectman's meeting where they discuss the policy. Article fifty-two, to see if the town will vote to dedicate the franchise fees and any other grants reserved, received from Spectrum Inc., formerly Time Warner Inc., to Saukapi Valley Media Tech, Saukapi TV, formerly TV2, for the purchase and maintenance of equipment and for operating costs. The Budget Committee recommends this article. Is there a motion?
Move the article.
It's been moved in second. Is there a discussion? Peter?
First, I would like to commend the work of Saukapi TV. I think that the students and the director do a great job. Second, I would like to offer gratitude to our select person, Ron, who worked behind the scenes to keep this program existing at the height.
I too am extremely impressed with the, all the students that have been here over the years. They do a great job. And thank you, Ron, too. Yes, Ron?
If you're in favor of the program and want to help, stay right after the meeting, and I'll explain some of the pamphlets that are out back, we can use your help.
Is there further discussion of Article fifty-two? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Article fifty-two is approved. We're to the last page. Article fifty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer 100% of the previous year's registration fees rebate from the state to Saukapi Valley Snow Drifters. There's money to be used for various purposes, such as trail maintenance, construction, and purchase of equipment and materials. These maintain trails to be open to the public during winter. Budget Committee recommends this article. Is there a discussion? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifty-three carries. Fifty-four, okay, this is a little different than we have done in the past. All these agencies or organizations in the deep past have been listed out individually, as each one for an article. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read the article. I'm going to read the agency, the requested amount, and the Budget Committee recommendations. After I've done that, if there are amendments that people want to make, I would like to take them in order, going down through the list, rather than shotgun through the whole list. So let me begin. Is that...
We need a motion to approve the article, and then...
I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, but I mean, before we go...
Yeah. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee's recommendations for the support of the agencies or organizations listed below. American Legion West Day Post, 123, amount requested 400. Budget Committee's recommendation, $400. American Red Cross, $1,000. Budget Committee, $0. Community Concepts, $2,950. The same for the Budget Committee. Harvest Hills Animal Shelter, $1,498. The same for the Budget Committee. Health Equity Alliance, $500. $0 from the Budget Committee. Healthcare Access, $425. $0 from the Budget Committee. Kizer Falls Circulating Library, $5,750. The same amount from the Budget Committee. The Lifeflight Foundation, $749. Same from the Budget Committee. Maine Public, is that Public TV? $100, $100 is also the recommendation. Maine Healthcare At Home, $1,500. $1,500 is the recommendation. Parsons Field Porter Historical Society, $500. Budget Committee's recommendation is the same. Saukoe River Corridor Commission, $300. $300 is the same. Saukoe River Festival Association, $300. Budget Committee's the same. Saukapi Valley Rec Council, $3,500. That's the same recommendation. Seniors Plus, $1,000. That's $1,000 recommendation from the Budget Committee. Smooth Feather Youth, $600. That's the same recommendation. Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. The requested amount is $562. Budget Committee recommendation is the same. Southwest Oxford County Nutrition, the Food Pantry, $3,100. Same recommendation. Southwest Oxford County Nutrition, the Food Pantry, $3,100, same recommendation. Tri-County Mental Health Services, $1,000, Budget Committee recommendation, $500. I would like a motion to approve the amounts of the Budget Committee recommendations, and then, then we'll move, if there are any amendments, to that.
The Budget Committee's recommendations are Sacapi.
Is there discussion? Yes, Gene?
I just wanted to say, as a Budget Committee member, that some of the reasons that we didn't raise money, American Red Cross, the money that was requested was going to go to the mid, main chapter.
Midcoast.
Midcoast chapter, which would not be servicing this area, and that's why we turned that one and recommended a zero. The Health Equity Alliance and the Healthcare Access were both based, I think, out of Lewiston or other places quite far away, and they were not providing services to this town. So those were our reasons for that. Tri-County Mental Health, at the bottom, we did reduce that. They are actually delivering less services to this area than they have in the past, and we thought that their request was more than they were actually providing to the town.
Is there further discussion? Yes, Jamie?
I just had a question about why we're grouping them all together. I thought last year we decided this was not a good idea.
And we decided it was a good idea. It saves the moderator reading that many articles. And the confusion last year was how to proceed. We got advice from MMA, they, it's allowable to do it this way, and they suggested that we just view them as line items, if you would, in a budget, you can alter each item. We might save five minutes.
Yes, or more. There's a question in the back, yes.
I was just wondering about the Healthcare Access Program. In their letter, it says that they did provide services on behalf of five program-eligible residents. So I'm not really sure if they're, it says that they're based out of Bridgeton, but that they're serving five of our residents, and they're only asking for $425 for seniors to be driven where they need to go. Is the letter from Healthcare Access Program?
Would someone on the Budget Committee like to answer the question, if there is a question? Why, why that was reduced if indeed they served Maine residents? I mean, Porter residents, excuse me.
Their letter states, "Five program-eligible residents."
Cost of 813 dollars.
Is this an extra letter that was picked up at the table, or is it in our...
No, this is on page 60.
Page 60?
Yep.
I can tell you that that letter was presented late at the Budget Committee.
I'm guessing that we had little information or no information, and there was no representative to speak to us, perhaps?
Because it's dated January 10. And it was, yeah, it was the transportation, and there was no information about what they do for Porter.
Right.
Gene was having a bad head day.
And even in the article, I mean, in their, their letter, I believe it's very broad. I don't think it's saying anything, speaking directly to the town of Porter.
Well, it is, it is directed to the town of Porter, and it does say, "On behalf of five program-eligible residents." And it says that they serve, let's see, over 33 towns, so I can't imagine that they only have five, five clients out of 33 towns. I'd like to make a motion to amend that amount to $425.
There is an amendment suggested to restore or to change the amount from 0 to $425, and that was Healthcare Access?
Healthcare Access Program. They're what we call senior rides, who can't get around.
All right. Is there, well, I, I said initially that I wanted to take this going down through the list, so we'll put that one right there. Actually, we're going to change that. We're going to get rid of this one, and then we're going to move back to the top of the list and go down through there, because we can't have two amendments sitting out there at the same time. So is there a discussion of the amendment to change the amount from 0 to $425?
I'd just like to say that I think the clarification on the issue, why the recommendation was made, was because there was no information available at Budget Committee. This letter is dated the 10th of January, which is significantly later than our Budget Committee recommendation, I'm sorry, Budget Committee deliberations.
Further discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of changing the amount from 0 to $425 for Healthcare Access, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries. So I'm going to hold that one right there. I'm going to go back up. Is there, does anyone have an amendment for the American Legion? An American Red Cross. Community Concepts. Harvest Hills Animal Shelter. Health Equity Alliance. Healthcare Access, we know. Kesar Falls Circulating Library. Life Flight Foundation. Does anyone have any more amendments for anyone on the rest of the list?
I have a question.
Do you have amendment for anything on the rest of the list? You do? Okay.
Not sure if it's possible, but I'll try. On Southern Maine Planning, Commission and Development, it says in their letter on page 80, they are beginning to increase our costs over a two-year period. I think last year's meeting, I stated, I've seen some of their work for planning boards, and it is not up to, doesn't meet the law. I'm wondering if we're required, if we're not required to pay this $562, could it be amended to a lower amount? I know that the Selectmen have stated...
It can be. Can you give me an amendment with lower amount?
What was that?
Do you want to make an amendment with lower amount?
Yes, but I, I guess I need clarification from the Selectmen as to whether that's allowable under their required, under their dues.
Right. Christina Fortheis is, is the, one of the members from, of the town for the commission, and she's on the executive board. Do you want to address that, Christina, or would you like me to do that?
I don't think I have the information to address that quite yet.
The dues are voluntary. There are towns that don't pay them. Who still receive some services. We receive a significant amount of services from them, part of which is their planning portion of their work, and I wouldn't argue with you about the efficacy of their planning efforts in, in some cases. But my suggestion is that this is a request, this $562 is dues, it's calculated by the number of people in the town. Each town is assessed those dues. We could give them nothing, and we could still use them. We get a small amount of use out of them for nothing, but my recommendation would be to continue to, to pay the full amount.
Do you have an amendment?
Well, I see our planning board chair has his hand up. I'm interested in, well...
No, I, I, if you have an amendment, I'd like to hear it now.
I would like to amend the, the amount from $562 to $300.
The amendment is for Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission changing $562 to $300. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded. Is there discussion of the amendment? Yes.
I'd, I'd just like to ask the Select Board exactly what planning service Southern Maine Regional Planning and Development has provided the town of Porter in the last five years, specifically, not, not salt contracts, planning.
The planning board, I mean, the Select Board has never asked for any assistance. That would be, that would come from the code enforcement officer or the, or the planning board, so, and I know of none that the code enforcement officers...
And the planning board has not utilized their services in the last five years.
I can speak to...
Can I? I'd like to add something. Does that include the appeals board?
I, I believe so. I, I don't think the appeals board is...
They, they do workshops for the appeals board with judges, and my experience has been they're invaluable, is all.
Are we talking, are you talking about Maine Municipal Association? Are you talking about Southern Maine Regional Planning and Development?
I think it's Southern Maine, but I could be wrong.
Most of the training comes through MMA, Maine Municipal Association.
For the, for the appeals board?
For appeals board training, planning board training, it's law...
Kathy, you had something you wanted to say?
I, just in response to Dan, I have, we have brought Southern Maine Regional Planning to the comprehensive planning within the last five years, maybe before you were there. They came and did a training of our comprehensive planning group, and I have been in touch with them by phone several times for information. Not always enlightening, but...
It helps.
Is there further discussion of the amendment to reduce the amount to $300?
Will we still get our discount on the road salt and/or copy paper if we give them less money?
That's a good question. I'm, I don't know the answer to that, but I believe, I, I don't think it would affect it, but I, I can't guarantee that.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment to change the amount from, for Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission, change it from $562 to $300. All those in favor of changing it?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's the moderator's decision that the nays have it. Are there any other amendments to be made from the rest of this list, other than the Healthcare Access, one that, which, which we have approved?
Are you planning on voting off all these or one?
Yes. Yes. Roger, do you have an amendment? Uh, yes.
You had mentioned earlier, I think there's some representatives here, I think they wanted to speak. You had mentioned you were saving that for the end.
I was, I asked at least one of them, and she's gone now, if they wanted to speak for particular issues, and she said, questions, if people had questions about it. But I will, I will recognize you if you'd like to speak.
I just, I just, my name is Holly Zalinski on the Zoom slot, and I really wanted to come today to thank you for your continued support for the services that we provide, and to also offer on some level, if you have any kind of a meeting that we could attend, just to make you aware of all that we do offer for older adults in your community, because we'd love to be able to service even more. But I was really here to thank you, and if there were any questions, certainly to answer those.
Any further discussion of the motion as amended? So the amendment was to change Healthcare Access to 400, from 0 to $425, and to approve all the recommendations of the Budget Committee as amended. Further discussion of that? No? All set? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 54 is approved as amended. Article 55, to see if the town will vote to accept the net income from the Stanley Higgins Trust to be paid to the Stanley Higgins Fund Committee for the purposes stated in such fund. Is there a motion?
Move the motion to the article.
Is there discussion of Article 55?
Who represents Porter on that committee?
Well, the...
Who represents Porter on the committee?
It's all Porter residents. It has to be, has to be. One teacher, one Selectman, and one towns person.
And they are, you?
Yep. Colleen is the citizen now, and Wendy Hodgkins is the treasurer.
Further discussion of Article 55? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 55 is approved. 56, a motion to adjourn is in order. It's not debatable. So moved. Vote with your feet.
People concerned with TV2 are whatever. Sacapi TV.
If you've been elected or appointed to a position, CJ, I swear...
Do I have to?